All right, it's 7:00 PM and I call the meeting of the Hudson Board of Trustees to order. It is January 5th, 2010, or 2010. Okay, I would ask the village administrator, please take the roll.
Trustee Cawthorne?
Here.
President Klein?
Here.
Trustee O'Brien-Berkman?
Here.
Staniford?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Whalen?
Here.
Zappa?
Here.
All here.
We're all here.
New year.
New year, yes, it's a new year. Unlike any we've ever had before. We have regular board meeting minutes of December 1st and December 8th. I would ask the board to, I would ask someone on the board to make a motion to approve these minutes. And what are your changes that you might like to make?
Separately, please.
Separately, please.
Minutes from one December.
Thank you, Darrell, do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Colleen. Are there any, any changes that need to be made?
I just noticed one typo under comments from the floor on the 1, 2, 3, 4th line. Says they express-
They expressed appreciation.
Appreciating, instead of appreciation.
Appreciation. Thank you, Colleen. Have you got that, Becky?
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other changes to December 1 board meeting minutes?
I have a change on page 3.
Okay.
The fifth line down. Living within a safety zone area is exempt-
Thank you.
-from the restriction. See, George, we do read these.
I am so glad to hear that. See another one? Ah, okay. Anybody else see the other one on that page?
No, but bring it up.
Third lane from the bottom, third line from the bottom, following the word lane. It should be use Cratley Lane North exclusively. All right. Let's see, these minutes went on for six pages. Is there any more correction? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. December 8th meeting minutes.
Item of approval is written for the Tuesday, December 8th, 2009 meeting minutes.
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Colleen?
Yep.
Thank you. Any corrections? All in favor of the meeting minutes as written, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. It's at this time that we ask any comments from the floor, opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics and issues and opportunities not on today's agenda. And I believe we have a gentleman here from Violia. His name is Randy, if you will take the microphone, indicate your name.
You can take it out.
You can take it out, just don't take it home.
Good evening, my name is Randy Triplet. I'm the new general manager for Violia Services out of St. Paul. And I just wanted to come here tonight and introduce myself. I know I'm a new face, but I've been in the industry for a long time. And we're looking forward to our, our first day of service tomorrow in the village of North Hudson.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for me? Just as a reminder, tomorrow is your service day.
So if you are watching this live tonight and your garbage is now, you are, you have one more thing to do before you go to bed. Thank you and welcome to Violia. Randy has just started recently and he's been a really wonderful inspiration, it's been great. So he really fills a gap between, it just fills a gap that we've needed and it's really been wonderful. So we look forward to it. I think that the whole transition has gone really well and there'll be a couple of hiccups, I'm sure, here. But hopefully in the next few weeks they'll all be ironed out and I think the transition has gone as smoothly as could be expected. Thank you, thank everybody at Violia.
Thanks for coming out. Randy, just to share a comment, I think it's going to take probably a few months. As I've ridden around town looking, ridden around the village, I see people are using those recycling containers. We will need some time and patience, I hope, with Violia until we understand a little bit more about recyclables. There are some differences between their recyclables from, as described and defined by Violia, from those that we see on the St. Croix County website. And it's just going to take a little bit of time until we have all that worked out. But we ask for your patience as we learn. I, I think people are really getting into it. And it's really good.
Yeah, and we will be stopping and providing the feedback at the end of the day in terms of what we're seeing. And we'll continue to do that all along. But obviously during the startup, I mean, my managers will be stopping in and visiting and saying, this is what we noticed today, this is what we saw today, and this is what we're going to do to educate the folks, so it's better the next time.
Very good.
All right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Kathy is on the agenda.
Under public.
Very good, okay, so.
Thanks for stopping by, Randy.
It's at this time that item number four on here is new visits from the board or staff, the president's comments. I've taken some notes and some of the things that I wanted to discuss with you tonight. What I'm trying to do over the period of, well, whenever appropriate, is to share with the folks out there some of the flyers and some of the other general information that might be of value. You may recall last year, we talked about and actually had a little presentation on the ICE program in case of emergency, and then we talked about the conspicuity last year. And this one, the one that I'd like to share with you now, I'm going to hold this up and hopefully you can see it. There's a couple cards out there, they're on the, at the treasurer's window. And it's a property fraud alert. This flyer is available from the St. Croix County Register of Deeds office and describes how someone can illegally use your property for financial gain. I'm sorry to have to indicate that it is appropriate for everyone to be aware of that fraudulent use of your property. It might be worth going out to the St. Croix County Register of Deeds office website. You just heard from Randy talking about garbage and just to reiterate, tonight is garbage eve. It's something new to probably most of the people in the village, more than half anyway, who aren't used to garbage pickup on a Wednesday. And so it may take us a little bit of time to get used to that as well. And this leads me into the topic of our village website. I'm going to say it, I'm going to assume that, I see John is writing this down carefully, that is that you will village, visit the village website, which is www.northhudsonvillage.org, where you can browse for helpful, helpful information beginning at the news, events, and public notices topic. I'll tell you what's in that. Now, I'm not going to go through the entire website because there is a plethora of information out there. But just under that alone, there's the notice of a public hearing. The plan commission is having a public hearing on January 20th regarding a proposed improvements and changes to the Freedom Value Center. So if you'd like to participate in that public hearing, you, or any others you know that are coming up, or you wonder what's coming up, it's a good place to go. There's also the 2009 president's letter to the village residents. As we discussed in December, printed copies are available at the clerk's counter. But the easiest way for you to read this letter is to go on the website. You can scan it and maybe pick out some useful information. It's kind of like my Christmas letter, the family Christmas letter, but this is the one to the village on what did we do last year? So we tried to capture those topics. Skating rink hours is the third item on there. Thanks to our neighbor and friend Terry Felon, he keeps the ice nice and smooth. He takes care of the rink and the warming house is kept hospitable for our skaters. You might want to take a look at that to see when the lights go off. I saw when I came in this evening that the lights were on, and it is a charming skating rink. Item D, changes in trash recycling and yard waste pickup. This site includes a drawing of the recycling sticker that appears on top of the recycling bins. It's probably worth noting that that's there so that you don't have to go out in the cold to read what's on the lid of your recycling can. You can read it right online in the warmth of your home. Let's see, the next one is the, is dear management information? So if you have any questions about that endeavor on the village's part, it's a good place to get some answers. I'd like to take you back to the village home site. It's from there, you can click on helpful links where you will find the St. Croix County recycling information. It's there that I discovered that the recycling and garbage bins should be three feet apart on the same side of the curb. Though, I thought, okay, I'll just mention that, there's a lot of other good useful information there. Let's see, from this link, that's the St. Croix County recycling, you can click on the home tab to get to the St. Croix County website where you can learn almost anything you want to know about St. Croix County. It is amazing the amount of information that's out there. And finally, our staff has been working on our village website as a place where you can get answers regarding taxes, the comprehensive plan where you'll be able to look at the survey that we did a couple of years ago. You'll be able to learn more about our parks, the meetings that take place every month, the times that those meetings occur, and as well as our municipal code book, and much more. So I'd encourage you to go out there and browse. It's, we're, we're doing our best to get that to the point where it'd be the residents' first place to go to get answers. Okay? And that's all I have. Gloria, I believe, oh, yeah, I believe you have a couple of things that you would like to discuss, so I'll turn the, turn it over to you.
We need to have a special board meeting, and in order to get that publicized in the paper for next Thursday or Friday, is the, the two dates, we would need to have it to paper by Friday of this week. And I guess I'm going to ask the board members to pick a day that would work better for them. You can either let me know after the meeting, or, yeah, let's do it after the meeting, just tell me which, you guys decide which of those two days would work best for that. And then if Becky could help me update on the election, I know the election deadline has came and gone. We have two incumbents and one new candidate, and the new candidate's name is?
Stan Wecken.
Stan Wecken. And now that's, the, the deadline was for him to be, appear on the ballot, but people can still write in until the 12th, is that correct, or be a write-in?
Yes.
Okay. And even though we don't have, the village doesn't need a primary, it's looking like we will.
It's my understanding that based on the number of candidates running for Hudson School Board that a primary will be required on February 16th.
And that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have anything else, Becky?
The next-
Did we want us to try to set a date for that special meeting, or?
If we do it now, then the public will know when the meeting is going to be-
It's, it's up to you guys.
However you normally do it, but.
Either the 14th or the 15th? Is there's a time that would work?
The administrator would like to call this meeting, or have this meeting either next Thursday or Friday. That'd be a week from this Thursday and Friday. So what, what is better for you, which day is better, and what time would be good for everybody? We do need a quorum, and I will tell you right now, I will not be able to attend, so.
I won't be able to be here on the 14th. Did you say the option was the 14th or 15th?
14th or 15th. And that's because of the timeline, right Becky, timeline for being able to post it.
Friday night board meeting?
A Friday night board. You do it Friday afternoon, too. How about from the right side of the table over here?
At what time of day?
That's, we'll, we'll pick a time.
First thing in the morning?
Early morning? How does early morning work?
Eight o'clock.
I'm good.
Eight o'clock? You want to do it Friday morning?
That sounds good, eight o'clock Friday morning?
Eight o'clock Friday morning?
Doable.
Let it be written. Eight.
What is, what is this meeting that's, oh, wait, that's wrong.
Terry, if you'd like to-
Sure, just, just a quick comment on it, but as you know, the cabin, the North Point Bar and Grill has, has been closed and been closed for a while. And this would be a meeting to possibly revoke their liquor license.
Okay. And we will not discuss it this evening, that's what next.
Evidence would be presented at that hearing, you know, they'll get a summons, there'll be a process that's followed, and then, and then you guys will, will look at all the, the situation and see what happens, and you'll vote on it.
Very good. And we'll have to elect a chair at that meeting, so.
That is, we just, that is-
Eight o'clock, Friday, the 15th.
15th, okay.
8:00 AM. Very good. Well, Terry, as far as you know, will that work for the attorney?
It should work, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I-
I didn't mean the, when I say, you know, I saw Bill's name on there, so.
Yeah, yeah. But, I mean, Bill doesn't even have to be there, really, but what we'll do is we'll give a summons to the current holder of the license, and if they show up, they can defend themselves, and if they don't show up, then it's pretty much automatic that it gets revoked, as long as we have sufficient grounds.
Okay. And that'll be discussed.
Yep, yep, you bet.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion on that topic? Okay. I don't have anything from the plan commission. I notice is that my book, and I'm sure yours is the same, there's no paper behind the plan commission tab, so, and I don't see Mike here.
The plan commission actually didn't meet in December. They will be having, as you mentioned, they'll be having a public hearing in January on the 20th, but yeah, there's really no cheer update at this point.
Okay. Personnel and Finance Committee is next, and you'll notice on here, claims approved and approval at requested for paying our bills, so let's take a look at that, and we'll entertain a motion, a couple of motions to pay our bills, because there are two sets of bills to pay.
I move approval of payment of the December 2009 non-recurring claims totaling $47,737.39.
Darrell? There's a second. Okay, thank you, Sandra. Any discussion? Does it require a vote, roll call vote? So, let's start down with Mr. Zappa.
Yes.
George S., Darrell?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
The second set of bills. Entertain that, a similar motion?
Is that the one for 51,656?
That's the one.
Okay, I move to approve the 2010 non-recurring claims received in December 2009 totaling
Second.
Thank you, guys. Any discussion? The bulk of that set of bills is actually $48,434 is for the EMS contract. And the reason that it was not folded into the other bill was because it came in later. Anything to add to those, Gloria?
Okay.
That's the first half, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we need a roll call vote, we'll start with Sandra.
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
George S.?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. The Finance Committee is recommending that we, that we table item B, amending the 2009 annual budget. And I would entertain a motion to that, in that effect, for this meeting.
Do we need to do that, I guess?
Just parliamentary inquiry, Terry? If we have, if we have tabled that to a date specific need, we table it again?
Probably not. I would say no.
We did that in Finance.
But it wouldn't hurt.
But it wouldn't hurt.
It doesn't hurt if you do it.
Let's-
I don't think it's required.
It may not be required, I'd like to, for those people who are following the agenda, let them know that we have tabled it until next month.
Mr. Chairman, I move, I move to table discussion of possible amending the 2009 annual budget until the February finance and board meetings.
Second. Darrell? Thank you, Joe. All in favor of tabling, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign, motion passes. Likewise with the 210 fund, we're not quite ready for that yet.
That's the same time, right?
Yes.
Can I just do a sole move on the 210, 210 fund? To our February meeting?
Yes.
To table it?
Right.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of tabling, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. And finally, the Stormwater Utility Fund. Gloria, you discussed it briefly, but Kevin's going to talk about it, okay?
Quick update on where we're at with the Stormwater Utility Fund. I guess the biggest thing that we've been working on over the last month is, probably the brunt of the work is actually taking your base map, your aerial map, and starting to phrase out the impervious areas, the hard surface areas, for the commercial industrial areas. And then from there, we'll start looking at the multifamily units. We're going to start working on the, the ordinance per se that creates the stormwater utility. We'll be bringing that to the village board for, for review. And then in the near future, we'll be meeting with Gloria and Mark and starting to look at timelines on what dates we want to, want to hit, so that we can start looking at implementing the, the utilities, so that's where we're currently at. So if you have any other questions?
Do you have any target dates for when this, when you're going to be coming to the board for final approval on that?
I guess internally, we're looking at having all the paperwork and going through the ordinance and the resolution right around the middle of the year, around June 1st, so.
Because this is, this would be an issue for budgeting, right? Next year? So we want it done before? I think so, yeah, we're going to need to probably borrow. Yeah. Okay. I'm just curious, mid-year is fine with me. Anybody else have any questions, Kevin? Thank you. Did you ride all the way out from Eau Claire just for that? I'm sorry. He could have phoned it in, we'd have played a recording. Public Works, Darrell, anything, any update? We've got your minutes from your December 15 meeting, but I'll leave it to you.
There really is just one item, I just would like to make sure everyone is aware that the application that we submitted for the LREP funding, local road improvement funding, was approved. I represented the village at that committee meeting that was held in December at the Hawaii Department. St. Croix County received an allocation of slightly over $94,000. There were 10 applications for projects, local projects that were received, and six received approval for funding. Our project that we submitted was the 10th Street project, and the village was awarded slightly over $16,000 for that project. So be informed that that process is now done.
Very good. Thank you, Darrell. Public Safety, Joe, got anything?
No comments, we did not meet in December.
Okay. And next we have Public Welfare.
We did not meet, but we do have an issue with the Humane, Animal Humane Society contract that if I could defer this to Gloria and Kathy Palmer, I'd like to do that.
Kathy, would you take the mic, please?
I'll just, just state briefly that we received a notice from the Humane Society that they wanted to amend our contract because of some issues that they were having with feral cats. And so we, Kathy is going to respond, and you will find the amended contract in here that encompasses the, their request for change.
Before you start, Kathy, I want to thank you for a very thorough and informative letter that you provided. It was excellent.
You're welcome.
And yes, I read the Animal Humane Society's letter. You filled in a lot of gaps.
Oh, thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
Well, feral cat issue is just, it's very volatile, basically. You've got one faction that doesn't want them killed, you've got the other faction that doesn't want them around, and basically what we're dealing with here is very small in the, you know, in our community in North Hudson. But we do have an issue, we have a pocket of them down by the Malalo, by the Malalo Apartments down here, and some scattered ones occasionally. It's going to be difficult to determine when they're out and running around whether they're feral or not without catching them. And you can't catch a feral cat without a live trap. Therefore, I don't know what the solution is going to be to this. My hope is that it will all blow over, and these well-meaning individuals that have filed this lawsuit will either back off, or, you know, things will calm down and go back to normal. I'm still looking into options as to what we're going to be able to do with them. There is an organization that I refer all wildlife calls to, it's called the American Animal Control, and they're out of Spring Valley. And I believe that they do trap and euthanize feral cats as well. They haven't gotten back to me. I have contacted the Animal Humane Society, I finally did get in touch with Janelle Dixon, but all of their solutions to the problem are basically the trap, neuter, and release solution, which is trapping them, spaying, neutering them, vaccinating them once, and then throwing them back out there, and then having somebody, some volunteer, keep a record of, you know, which cats are in this colony, and then trapping the new ones as they come in. And it's very time-consuming, it's very cost ineffective. It's sad for the cats because, you know, they're not vaccinated, and then if they do happen to bite somebody, you know, or wind up sick on your doorstep, you know, I don't know what we're going to do with them. So I'm still, like I said, I'm still looking into options, but as far as the Animal Humane Society goes, you know, they've been backed into a corner, and the reason behind their new policy is to keep the village and the other municipalities out of this lawsuit. So, you know, they're trying to do the right thing. And I would highly recommend that, you know, we continue to impound there for the kitties that we can catch and the dogs, because in the big scheme of things, there aren't that many wild cats. And I don't think that in the short term, the wild cats are going to be an issue. It's kind of over a number of years. I did take, I think, seven of them out of Lake Malalo this past summer, so the population is down right now. Usually takes a year or two for it to build back up, and hopefully by then we'll have something else in the works.
What, what did you mean by you took the cats out of Lake Malalo?
Well, literally, they live, they live under, under the hill there, you know. I probably could have taken them out of the lake at some point in time. There was a gentleman down there that was so angry, he was throwing my live traps into the water at one point, so. But I don't think he would have thrown them in with the kitties in them, so. But yeah, they, they're, you know, I mean, it flares up. I've been doing this for almost, gosh, 20 years. And so it, it cycles. It's like on a four-year cycle down there, where I have to go down, trap a bunch of them, get them out of there, and then it calms down for a few years, and then it cycles up again, so.
Kathy, can I read the last paragraph of your letter to us?
Sure.
Last paragraph, "Therefore, until such a time as there is another option-" Last paragraph. "Therefore, until such a time as there is another option, I will no longer be able to pick up feral/wild cats. No live traps can be set, even for the injured or sick ones. If it is determined necessary to do so, and a feral cat is captured, I will have no other option but to just let it go where it was caught. If it is a bite situation, I will do my best to get the cat to the university for testing. It is my sincere hope that this is only a temporary situation. I will still pick up domesticated cats that the caller is able to handle and can safely be transferred to a carrier." Yes, Kathy, we do understand your reasoning.
Okay.
But I wanted the public to know that you will not be able to, because of what you've discussed, pick up these cats.
I, it's not my choice. It's seriously not my choice.
No, we understand.
I'm certainly no apologist for feral cats. There are a couple that I assume are feral cats in my neighborhood, because I've seen evidence of their, their kills. I mean, the evidence are feathers, so I'm assuming they're, they're killing birds. But I'm a little unclear in reading the information here. What, what is the basis of the lawsuit that's, that's brought? What are the allegations that are being raised that's prompting all of this?
The situation was that I was called down to Afton, Minnesota, to pick, because there were cats destroying this lady's garden. She was trying to sell her business, and every time she would come into work, the gardens were destroyed. There was tomcat spray on the wall that you could smell walking in. So I set some live traps, caught three cats, took them over to the Animal Humane Society. Now, when I picked up the traps, the cats were literally bouncing the traps across the yard. They were so wild. They were banging them. I had to black box them, which is wrapping them in a towel, to try and calm them down. That didn't calm them down all the way to the animal shelter, so these were wild animals. We got them to the shelter. The shelter couldn't even transfer them out of the cages, so they euthanized them within a 24-hour period. In the Minnesota State statutes, as well as Wisconsin State statutes, there is supposed to be a holding period for stray cats, unless it is determined by a veterinarian that it is cruel or inhumane to hold them for that length of time, and then they're allowed to euthanize them humanely. The Animal Humane Society felt that it was cruel and inhumane to hold these animals for that period of time, so they euthanized them. A few days later, I got a call from a lady. The situation wasn't under control. She was still having the same problem. So I went back down there, set some more traps, took four more out of there. Well, turns out about three days later, a lady that lived three houses down went to the Humane Society looking for her wild cats that she had been feeding, and was pretty upset that they were not there, and contacted some cat rescue groups, one of which was the shelter and the animal ark down in Hastings, and from that, because the Animal Humane Society euthanized these cats without waiting, in Minnesota, five-day holding period, therefore, they filed a lawsuit stating that the Animal Humane Society is in violation of the state statutes. Now, technically, in their attorney's opinion and in my opinion, they are not in violation of the state statute by any stretch of the imagination, but these people feel that they are, so it's, they tried to do litigation. They tried to, you know, talk it out, but these people weren't gonna hear anything of it, and they're still demanding that, you know, retribution be made for these seven kitties that got put to sleep. All of them were bouncing the cages across the yard. I can attest to that. I had to pick them up. I know that these were wild cats. However, their consensus was that if the cats were allowed to calm down and put in a quiet place, that eventually they would have calmed down. Now, the first batch that went in, nobody started to even look for until the holding period was over with anyway, or regardless of whether they were euthanized within 24 hours. The second batch, I would have to say, the holding period wasn't over, but, you know, still, how cruel is it to sit there and watch those cats in a cage when they're not used to it and be tortured for five days?
And they were so wild, they couldn't even be taken out of the cages?
No, they couldn't even be taken out, they couldn't safely be taken out of the cages. So, you know, it's kind of a, these people mean well. They really do. They, they love cats and they mean well, but what they have done is just created the situation that is almost impossible to, to deal with. The animal ark sees things in black and white, and they see that the trap, neuter, and release program is the only way to handle this situation. Trap them, neuter them, release them, and let them live their lives out, you know, in the wild, and that's, you know, if they only last a year, or they succumb to coyotes, well, that's the natural way of doing things. Well, the natural way of doing things, if they were to actually do that, would mean then don't feed them either. You know, I mean, don't take them out. Don't spay or neuter them. Don't feed them. Just let them be, and they probably, nature would probably take its course. But, you know, like I said, it's a real volatile issue, and it's a very, very difficult one to be on either, either side of, you know, and to try and stay neutral in is almost impossible.
Kathy, is there any problem with rabies from these cats?
Very definitely. There could be, yes, very definitely. And that's the biggest issue.
Yes. I just wanted to hear you say that.
Oh, yes, very definitely, and that's, that's my main reasoning for getting them off the street and getting them, you know, out of the public, out of the general, you know, population, is because they're, they live right with the wildlife. They eat with the raccoons. You know, they sleep with the raccoons in some cases.
How romantic.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Anything else, Jim?
I do not believe so.
And we move right into the Park Board, and Colleen?
Do we need to approve the revision to the contract?
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, that's why we brought Kathy here.
Kathy, you had us so captivated. We forgot what we came here for.
Thank you, Terry.
About kitties.
Well, the only change, the only change is that they're not gonna accept feral cats anymore. That's the only change to the contract, so I think just a motion to accept the contract as amended would be fine.
2C.
And that item is 2, yeah, 2C.
2C.
2C says, "AHS will not accept feral cats seized under municipal authority by your city's CSO or ACO."
They will, however, take them if an individual brings them in?
Excuse me. Would you give Kathy that mic?
I'm sorry.
That's very important. Okay, because that's not in the contract.
Yeah, that was something I meant to mention, that I was told to keep it kind of on the QT, but if a, if a homeowner traps them and brings them in as homeowner, they will accept them. But then you're also looking at the, you know, safety issue, you know, there. But they will accept them if the homeowner will bring them in.
Okay, thank you. I think we need a motion to adopt, is it to, to adopt the revised...
Sure, or accept, yeah.
Accept the revised contract with Animal Humane Society. Do I hear that motion?
I'll move.
Is that okay? I think you phrased that perfectly, George. I couldn't have done it better, so.
Yeah, the contract dated 12/30/09.
Yeah, that's the one. And, and I've got a second from Mr. Zappa. Is that right, Mark?
E.
E, okay. Because this is, any further discussion? Because this is a contract, we'll have a roll call vote, and we'll start with Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
George S.?
Yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, and thank you, Terry.
Yep, for keeping us honest.
We just had a short meeting last month, mostly we'll be working on the, see if the railroad property purchase and the grant will be accepted, working on the Chief Jansen Memorial Park, getting the playground equipment installed in the spring, and at that time, we'll have some sort of ceremony dedicating it to him. And then also, Mr. Dolph Schmidt from the, from North Hudson, the principal, would like to work with the Park Board on some environmental studies and learning for the kids at North Hudson. It doesn't sound like it would really involve much money on our part, just kind of working in cooperation with them. I think it'd be a great opportunity for the kids and a good use for that park. They'll help keep it clean. And if you've seen what they've done at Rivercrest on their trail, I think they're kind of envisioning something like that for Webster Park. There's nothing formal yet, just they would like to work with us. And that's all I have.
Terry, do you see any issues with this?
No.
It is, after all, a public park.
Mm-hmm.
The school, kids are public, and they're, interestingly enough, they're all residents of the village, aren't they?
Most of them.
Most of them, you know, most of them. Not all of them, most of them, okay.
But I think it'd be a good opportunity for them with their, the whole district's learning goals for environmental, and so we look forward to working with them.
No issue with that at all. I have an opportunity, this is not the agenda, but just an opportunity. I need someone to attend the EMS meeting on January 19th at 4:30 PM. I'd just like, is there a volunteer who could go in instead?
I could go.
Thank you, Colleen. I'll give you... Okay, would you pass that to them? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other business?
George, is it public somewhere that the skating rink is now open?
It's in his comments.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's, yeah, it's, it's been open. You see ice out there.
Published in the papers?
Yeah, newspaper had an article on it, sure.
It's cool. I can, I'd like to, I'll thank Terry. That's nice.
Anything else?
Do it, Jerry.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
All in favors indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, keep it the, uh, same sign.